Okay, it is seven thirty, so we call to order the Navy City Council meeting for Monday, June 3rd, 2019, and ask that the police riots will be located to be followed by the pledge allegiance. Tonight, as we officially commence the summer season in our community, we are ever thankful for the many blessings and improvements that we enjoy throughout the downtown Batavia area, and we are most hopeful that this year, despite all the weather obstacles that keep being thrown at us, that we're going to be able to have met widespread community events and activities that will be enjoyed by thousands of people. And we saw that on this past Saturday with the street fair on River Street, and we enjoyed all the people that showed up for that. So, the, that activity for the summer is alive and well and growing very rapidly. So, we look upon that as a great show of support for Batavia, and that the farmer's market will be a pride of this community for many years to come. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each one of these men and women as they go about their vital mission. Also tonight, we want to ask for a vision and understanding and blessing as we act on the various issues of business that are before the city council. And as I've said before, this is all done with each of the members of the council trying to reach in their own hearts and minds the very best courses of action that will impact Batavia's future in a very positive nature. Also tonight, we want to ask for a special blessing for all those who serve our community in the public work department, and the police, fire, and the general administration, and we just ask that, in the case of those who are responding to emergencies or needy calls, that a special blessing be go, go with them as they go about their vital missions of serving our community. We ask for all these blessings. Tom in?
Alderman, Wolf, would you lead us with the pledge allegiance?
Would you lead us with the pledge of the flag in the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
As the city clerk, would you please call the roll?
Miller?
Here.
Rosato?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knop?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Euer?
Here.
Serone?
McFadden?
Here.
The record reflect that thirteen of the fourteen elected aldermen are present in account for the city meetings meeting, so we do have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving to item four, which is the monthly, or the meeting reminder that we ask everyone to, oh, let the record reflect that Alderman Serone just walked into the meeting, so we now have a complete group of aldermen. I just want to remind everybody to please use the microphones, because those in the TV audience who are listening in have a hard time hearing it if we don't. So, we appreciate your understanding in that issue. Moving then to item number five, items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. And Alderman Chantet, do you have anything?
I'm not aware of anything to be added, but I will note that the super majority of us are wearing Hawaiian shirts tonight.
All right, moving then to item number six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Chantet?
Um, I move that we, sorry, I read the consent agenda approvals, May 31st, 2019 payroll in the amount of eight hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. Accounts payable check register in the amount of two million, four hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. The city council meetings for May 20th, 2019. For approval, class F special event liquor license for the Batavia Main Street cocktails in the park. Ordinance number nineteen dash forty-four revising Title V of the Batavia Municipal Code regarding gambling. Resolution nineteen dash sixty-three dash R approving a materials package bid in the amount of ninety-one thousand, seven hundred sixty-eight dollars to Substation Enterprises, Inc., for the Paramount Park distribution substation upgrade. I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second? Move Alderman Chantet, second, by Alderman Meitzler for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Would you call the roll?
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, fourteen yes, no-nos, none-haves. All right, item seven matters from the public for items not on the agenda. I am honored tonight to introduce Tom Goslin, who is in the front row, and Tom's going to speak to us for just a couple of minutes about the idea being proposed by the Batavia Bulldog Boosters to bring to Batavia High School football games a brief fireworks display every time the Bulldogs make a touchdown. And given the success of that team, I'm thinking, I hope they got a big budget to buy a lot of fireworks. It'll be a lot of show out there if this is the case.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yes, I've been talking with the boosters, and in particular Dennis Piran, the head coach, and he's been working with the principal, also the fire marshal for the city. The hope would be, each game, as they come running onto the field, to have a couple bursts go up, a red and a gold, or yellow after the National Anthem, a red, white, and a blue, and then hopefully after each score, a red and a yellow that would go up. Main thing, and what I wanted to bring up, is there are two categories of fireworks. They've got one point three G, which is what we see at the Batavia fireworks display each year, that's the big stuff. They've got what's called consumer-grade fireworks, which are not nearly the same. The, the size of what's being set off, much smaller. The height that it goes up as well, not nearly as high. I've been, again, working with the fire marshal, and we're waiting for a letter from the superintendent to hopefully then get an application to submit, perhaps for the July meeting, for the fireworks display. We would expect perhaps twelve to twenty-four things going off each game. The noise level on that, as I understand it, would be less, it would carry less for each of these than the marching band does when they're playing, so the noise isn't With this, I have obtained liability insurance, a million per occurrence, ten million total, just talking with Mayor Shelkey. The area that we'd be setting up would be, hopefully, on the south side of the football field, kind of where that L-shaped retention pond is. What we're using, they say you should have a seventy-five-foot clearance between you and the crowd. We'd have marked off an area that's at least a hundred twenty-five feet between what's being set off and the fence that would kind of get you into the track football field area. So, we're hoping to go ahead and bring that forward, perhaps at next meeting.
Yeah, I just, Tom and I have been talking about this for the last, I don't know, three or four weeks. He called me about it, and then I've had some opportunity to talk to a couple of people from the school district, and they're wanting to know what we're saying about it, and I'm saying, well, we're wanting to know what you're saying about it. So, the only thing I guess I cautioned Tom about was, is that I suggested that we not try to have big booms out there, where you launch these things up and wake the baby up, and, because there's a lot of senior citizens that live in close proximity to the Batavia High School fields, specifically right across the street on Wilson and Georgetown. I know there's a big senior population there, and I don't think that all of us on the city council want to be hearing from those folks that we're being woke up all the time because of some late-night game or something. So, I just think there's some common relationships in this community that can be easily responded to, and that we can all do our thing. I personally think it's a great idea that we're, that Bulldog Boosters want to do this. I mean, there's a few of us sitting at this table who are Batavia High School alumnus, and we can remember lesser days with lesser activities than what this has truly become now, including state championships and everything else that's out there on the walls. But, we really do have a lot to be proud of at Batavia High School, and I recently had one of my fellow mayors, I won't say who, in here for a tour of Batavia, and I got permission for me to stop at Batavia High School and walk him down the hallway there by the fieldhouse where they have the exhibit of all the history of Batavia athletics. And when he walked in there and saw that we had a Super Bowl quarterback, and the fifth all-time high scorer in the history of professional basketball, and two or three major league baseball contract signings, and everything else, he says, well, he says, I come from a much bigger town and a bigger high school, but you got me beat into the ground with all the stuff that this place has done. And so, you know, I don't like to flaunt that, and I, I made that comment to him, and he said, well, it's not flaunting, you should be having a big smile of pride on your face. And I said, well, we try to do this, and, you know, when we get ready to go off on those games, the police and fire department in Batavia is right there to lead them out of town with the fire truck, and we're right down sitting someplace on Kirk Road when they come back after they win, and we take them through town, red lights and siren, and we really try to make them feel like we're proud of them, and hopefully, that goes both ways. And I think this, you know, activity certainly would be something that would, again, show the community and the those in the program that we are proud of them, and certainly will show all the visitors to Batavia that, hey, you come here and you get a Fourth of July thrown in at you.
The, the last thing I'd mention, unless there are any questions, is we're concerned to make sure we're doing everything as safe as possible as the fire department would want it. One of the dates that we're going to be applying for is August 1st, before the season starts, when there won't have a stand full of people. At that point, we can have a better idea setting off less of these things, the sound. There are some that come with no sound as well, so that's certainly an option if that...
Is that the night of the Bulldog Corn Boil or something?
No, the Corn Boil, I think, is the 24th. The first game, I think, is the 31st.
The first, is there something going on?
Uh, it was the date Dennis had requested, Dennis Piran, the head football coach. I think they have a night, seven-on-seven practice or something like that, so I think he was going to have some of the football players, and certainly city council, anyone who's interested in seeing. But, the goal is to make sure we've got it set up, that it's done correctly, and that everything goes according to plan. And that would include the noise level as well, we can certainly check on that.
Well, I might know, we have the voice of the Bulldogs sitting here at the table, so...
He's a whole lot louder than what we're setting off, so. Only blown a few speakers out.
So, I think, anybody have any questions at Tom tonight? Alder?
My, the only question I would have, or concern I would have, is you see it, I mean, I know it's not as loud as Fourth of July, but you see it, the postings that, hey, dogs, veterans, and everything, that we need to figure out how we're advertising this well, so that people in the surrounding area are prepared, because when you're not prepared for it, that's when the dogs have problems and veterans might have issues.
Sure, and one of the things the fire marshal had mentioned, we haven't discussed it further, would be to send out letters within a certain radius of the area that we're setting out. We'd certainly be happy to, as long as we're able to get the addresses, to work with them on that. You know, I, I don't know, maybe we talked to the Chronicle or one of the local papers, and, you know, maybe they can put some press out as well, I don't know. But, yes, I, the, the hope would be, again, that the noise is not going to be a problem, and that within a game or two, people will, we see Cougars fireworks going off all the time, so.
The new communications director for the school district is sitting in the back there. I'm sure she'll have some press release about that, but usually it's only the first game or two that people get upset about.
Well, correct. The, the other thing I'll mention is, all of this is done electronically now, so you've got everything that gets set up, and that stays courted off from everyone else, and there's a remote for, actually, ignition, so, right. I'm the only one who gets to push the button, but, that, we're going to be at least a hundred feet away even for the ignition, so we're keeping everyone far clear of the site. As well, these don't go up as high as the others, it might be a hundred fifty feet, a hundred twenty feet, and again, it's much more a pop than a bang.
So, let me just throw, in closing here, throw in a moment of Batavia history. Tom Goslin's father, John Goslin, was the city attorney for Batavia for a number of years, I don't know, ten or whatever it was. And I can remember a meeting that he came to as the city attorney, and said, well, I have a son that's real interested in fireworks, and I've gone out and bought some, and I'm, I'm filing for a permit so that I can have my own fireworks show done. And they lived at Lockwood Hall, which is down there right across from the West Side Cemetery on Route 31. And I believe you were the gentleman that was...
Well, as he told the story, someone complained because he was setting off fireworks, so he did research it and found out that, yes, you do need a permit, including city of Batavia. So, when he submitted the permit for Batavia, he submitted one for himself. So, I think the last one was in ninety-three.
Well, whenever it was, but I remember the first one. I was sitting in the audience, and it's some young reporter for the old Kane County Herald, which is now long gone, but your dad was quite adamant that he was going to make sure he had all the proper paperwork, and he said, in fact, he was sitting here, this is where the, you know, it wasn't in this room, we were down the other end of the street, but he was sitting there next to the mayor, and he said, now I've got a conflict here, so I'm going to get up out of my chair, and I'm going to go out and sit in the audience until this comes up, and then I'll come up back up and use the podium, and he spoke, and he came back, and then he came back and said, hell. So, it was what it was, so you're kind of carrying on the, so you, you certainly, probably over the years, you fired them out, pushed them out of bus?
We, we have, those were more manual ignition, but, yes, and I still got all ten fingers, so that's good.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Anybody else in the audience tonight on other items? All right. Okay, we will then go to item eight, which is the presentation tonight by the Chamber of Commerce, and we have its executive director and current president walking up here, and I might note, as Alderman Wolf has just mentioned, she is leaving the chamber, so I'm led to believe, and is going to be switching over to the school district, which, we're not losing her, she's just getting in a more visible spot, I think, in some respects. But, I just want to use this opportunity to thank Holly for her good service in kind of upgrading and bringing the chamber to a new plateau of community reach and understanding, and you really have been a dynamic force in driving the chamber to become a more, very integral part of Batavia and its business community. So, I thank you for all the good efforts you've done to, it's a greater and better chamber since you arrived, and I thank you for all you've done to make it that way.
Well, I appreciate that very much. I couldn't do it without you, so thank you for all the support that you have given to me personally and to the chamber. It has been a wonderful five years and three months underwater, but it's been a great time, and it's, has been a time, I've learned so much about this community from the time that I was at BATV for five years, and then at the chamber now for five years. Now I just move on to the school district, and it's like I tell people, it's only because I want to be on the winning chili cook-off team. The chamber came in second last year, so I'm just saying, and the school district came in first. But, an opportunity that I, I could not pass up, and one that I hope to continue to contribute to the community. I really do love Batavia, and just another way for me to hopefully help out another organization in the community, so, but thank you for all of your kind words, and how much time you've spent with me cutting ribbon and welcoming all the new businesses to our community, so thank you. We do still have events coming up, all of which I will still be a part of. On June 5th, we are doing an official ribbon cutting for Funway and their new track out on the side of their building. Also, we have, and that is at 5:00 PM on June 5th, so please join us, I think you get a free, a free ride on a go-kart if you want to come out and be a part of that. Also, this is not a chamber event, there's a couple that I'm going to mention to you today that aren't chamber events, but very essential events, and I just like saying, Super Savvy Senior Expo, that is coming up on June 5th as well, but that's at 9:00 AM, and that's at the Eastside Community Center, it's a park district program. Then, we also have another community event that the chamber is partnering on, its inclusion training for businesses. A couple of months ago, we were given these stickers for unity and diversity within our community, and they were set on my desk, and we're just going to hand them out, and I felt that it was very important for people to know what it meant for you to put one of them on your door. So, they have partnered with an organization called Youth Outlook, and they're going to come and put a presentation on for business owners, so that they can learn what it's like to recruit talent within the LGBTQ community, and also how to solicit business from that community, so by creating a safe space for them in their businesses. So, that will be at Water Street Studios on June 6th, and that is at 3:30. Then, on June 11th, Batavia Women in Business Luncheon is interactive networking games, and so that will be a fun event at 11:30 AM at Oscar Swan Inn. Our BC Squared Morning Networking Event will be on June 12th at 7:30 AM, and that's the Comfort Inn and Suites in Geneva. Then, on June 21st, the Forty-Fifth Annual Batavia Chamber Golf Outing, that will be at Orchard Valley, a shotgun start at 1:00 PM, still taking in foursomes and individual players. I will actually be golfing this year instead of helping with the event, it's kind of my last hurrah out the door, is the golf outing. Then, we have HR Programming, which is leadership development for all, on June 26th at the VIA. June 27th, we have a ribbon cutting for Mill Creek Early Childhood Program, who actually is also our presenter this evening. So, on June 27th at 4:30 PM, we'll be doing their official ribbon cutting and welcoming them to Route 31 in Batavia. A couple of other things, we have upcoming the Windmill City Fest on July 12th through the 14th, I will be serving beer there. And July 27th, the Chili Cook-Off, I will be representing the school district this year. So, but again, from the bottom of my heart, thank you all for nodding, smiling, waving, not asking too many questions, because I can't answer them, if it's not on this paper, I have no idea what we do. But, thank you again all for your support coming out to our events, supporting the business community, thinking of the business community and many of the decisions that you make here, and I know that the business community in Batavia is just going to continue to grow and become even more rich than it is today, so thank you for that. And I would like to introduce you to Alana, she is the owner and director of the Mill Creek Early Childhood Program, and she's going to give you a little presentation on what they do there.
Good afternoon. My name's Alana Marzak, and as she said, I am the owner and director of Mill Creek Early Childhood Program. I first just want to say thank you for, to the chamber for just being so supportive and welcoming when I, when we got our location in Batavia, went, ran, ran right over there, and they sort of just opened their arms, and it's helped and supported us through everything right now. So, we will get started, I have a PowerPoint presentation, so. My eyes, where does this start for it? Just double-click?
Up top at the left, go to the right now, on the orange bar, the little arrow there.
That one, oh, right, there we go. So, we are Mill Creek Early Childhood Program, we, a little bit about myself, I have an early childhood degree, and in Illinois, Director Credential Level Two. I've been teaching since I was fifteen, which is hard to believe, laws change as you get older, but, but I, so I've been in this field for over twenty years. I've grew up in the field too, my mom was a teacher, so went to college for it and just sort of fell in love, knew that's what I want to do. When we moved out to Geneva, we were looking for programs for our two children that are sitting back there very quietly still, and you, when you're calling places and they're just focused on academic, 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 and I know as an educator and research-based that the social-emotional skills are so important, and that there also wasn't any nature-based or regio-inspired program out here, so my husband said, why don't you start one? And I said, well, you know, that'd be great, but where's the money? So, we started it in our home, we have, currently, we have a licensed-in-home program, and we are, it was a goal to start in the home and get out, and now we are, and we are very excited to be in Batavia at 510 South Batavia Avenue. It's an amazing home that's been commercial, and we have been putting a lot of love, sweat, and energy, and time into it, but it is ready, we are moving in this Friday, and if you want any more information about it, our website is www.mcearlychildtaprogram.com, or you can always give us a call at six three zero three two six seventy-five nineteen, and we also have a Facebook page. So, Milk, what we are, we are a regio-inspired, nature, and relationship-based program. We're open 6:30 to 5:30, Monday through Friday. We provide full-day care for infants through school-age children. We have a half-day preschool program for two-to-five-year-olds. We have a full-day kindergarten program, before-and-after-school program for school-age children, and camp and enrichment programs as well. So, you're probably wondering, what's this regio-inspired program? Well, before I tell you about it, I just want to read this quote that I think sort of helps get in the mindset. You know, "Expecting all children the same age to learn from the same materials is like expecting all children the same age to wear the same clothing." So, you just think about that. So, the regio approach to education encourages young children and their teachers to explore, question, and discover in a really exciting environment. Educators, we know that children learn best through active, engaged, and meaningful play. They have in-depth explorations of topics which are motivated by the children's interest, they are not pre-planned curriculum, and we have excitement and curiosity that allows the curriculum to present it in an engaging and developmentally appropriate manner for the children. We are also a relationship-based program, and we recognize that children thrive in secure relationships, that secure relationships take time to develop, and that these important relationships are best if they are long-lasting. So, we are a continuity-of-care program. In order to form those secure relationships, the children and the teachers stay together for multiple years as they transform, or they trans, they transition from one classroom to the next. So, our infant through, until your child turns three, they have the same teachers that stay with them, and then when they're three to five, those teachers stay with them. And then our child and teacher ratios are a lot smaller than what DCFS requires and most average classroom sizes out. So, as you can see, the top row is the average class sizes and the maximum size for a, each classroom, and then the lower columns are what our classroom sizes are. So, we are pretty much cutting our classroom sizes in half while still maintaining the same staff, because again, the quality and the relationships and what you can do makes such a big difference. Why a nature-based program? Well, children's free time has dropped by thirty-eight percent from 1979 to 1999. It's now 2019, that's twenty years, so you can imagine the difference now. The average two-year-old spends two and a half hours watching TV a day, and the twenty-four seven media coverage of dangers to children, whether it's sunburns, coyotes, mosquito bites, it creates a fear in parents, so that also causes some lack of the children being outside. Our nature-based program is, shows that children's social, psychological, academic, and physical health is positively impacted when they have daily connections with natures. Things like catching bugs, pushing over the logs, jumping in a puddle, playing in mud, climbing the trees as high as you can, these are all really important things. So, why did we end up in Batavia? Well, we've been looking for about three years, and just, I didn't want to put children in a box, inside boxes, I really wanted to find a nice place that felt like home, and we've been working with Austin and BEI for the past three years, and he was extremely patient as I kept saying, nope, that's not it, nope, that's not it, and we finally found the location. The proximity to downtown and the river was one thing that really caught my eye, being able to connect with all the businesses and having all those resources pretty much right outside our back door. The location for families, as they commute, most of my current families go down to either downtown, or they're commuting to the train, or they're just taking eighty-eight, and then also zoning, this was a big challenge for us, and this building was already zoned. And also just the welcoming of the community in Batavia, as I got to know it more and more, I just was like, this is where I want to be, it feels right. A little bit to Bat Fest, we've been going for three years, it's a lot of fun. Whoop. We have been doing the ice dam, we went to see the ice dams in the river, the Bulldogs, the children love them, Limestone Cafe, we meet a lot of local artists there. Oh, no. Sorry. And then, we do yoga, Shine Yoga, and just, yeah, just recent, the Batavia Wellness Fair we were at, and we had a really fun activity to get kids moving and parents moving, a lot more adults, I was surprised, got involved, but it was a lot of fun, and just that type of feeling that nobody had any negative comments, everybody just thought it was a great time, it was really nice. So, the economic impact of Mill Creek Early Childhood Program, we are going to have between fifteen and twenty full- and part-time jobs that we're bringing in, about forty to sixty potential consumers coming into the area daily, twice, because you've got to think about, they have to bring their children too and from school, and then just we're using and supporting and partnering with as many local businesses as we can, we're trying to stay small. I'm a small business, I want to also support the other small businesses. And just increasing the educational awareness through advocacy, you know, I really couldn't help but share a little bit and stick some in there for you guys, because I think it's just so important, and I think we sometimes get away from the social pressure of academics when there's so many more foundational skills that children need. And all the community events that we attend and also that we organize this year, our Children's Hands-on Auto Show, which is usually in Mill Creek in Geneva, is now going to The children vote on the vehicles, it's free for everybody, and admission is just donations to the Batavia Food Pantry this year. So, again, and so if you know anybody with any antique, or muscle, or sports cars, have them register, they just have to understand that the children are going in the cars. It's a tough crowd to find, but we do good. And then just a quick quote from the Academy of, American Academy of Pediatrics. Play is fundamentally important for learning in the 21st century, such as problem-solving, collaboration, and creativity, which require skills that are critical for your children to be successful as adults. We need to emphasize the importance of play in learning preschool curriculum, and we need to communicate this message to you, to the lawmakers, the legislators, education administrators, as well as the broader public. It is so important. And this came from a article that was just written in 2018, and the link is down there. But also, in this article, they are letting us know that pediatricians are now prescribing play. It is actually a prescription that they have to give parents because the children are not getting enough of it. So, it's just, it's a little heartwarming. So, we are just very excited to be a part of Batavia. We have been working with the city very closely with codes, and I've been learning quite a bit because this is a new, the process that we did was a little bit new, more than just with the children, and the, everybody at the city has been fantastic, answering questions, giving us a call, being patient as we find things out, so I really enjoyed that. And then we also have our ribbon cutting, as she said, on Thursday, June 27th and 4:30. I would love for all of you to come, if you can, see what's making us a little bit different than a lot of the programs out here. It's, it's not what you're probably used to, and it's, it's, you know, we're trying to make it for these children and what's best for them. So, if anybody has any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Yeah, we, as you know, we are on TV here, and one of the things we get requests for is when somebody like yourself talks, we need to have you give your telephone number and your email address so if somebody's watching, they can call you and get information.
Okay. Yeah, so our phone number is (630) 326-7519. My email is imarzak, M is in Mary, A R, C is in cat, Z is in zebra, A K, at millcreecep.com. So, they can go ahead and email us.
Right. That's always the most important part that we communicate with the rest of the greater world out there.
Yes.
But we wish you many, many years of business growth and success and service in our town. We thank you for choosing Batavia. And I'm sure you'll hear some, somebody watching TV here, or somebody sitting at the council chambers here may have a need for your services someday, so.
Already registered.
What?
Already registered.
Well, there you go, right there. Thanks for being part of our community.
No, thank you. And if, if any of you see the children walking around, we're very, we've already, Jeff Albertson has met them several times as we're walking around because we have to hit the bulldogs, then we have to go see the police department, they have to go to the park, we have to go to the Peace Bridge, it's like a big, they, they don't eat lunch, so they know, they miss it. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Item 9 is going to be a presentation on the Aurora Pride Parade and Alderman Chan, so I'll turn this over to you.
Actually, we have the, the founder of the organization, I'm just going to turn over him to do a quick presentation.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Chuck Adams, I am the president of Indivisible Aurora. I started Indivisible Aurora two and a half years ago. Our work consists mainly of supporting historically marginalized groups in, in the Fox Valley area. We started pretty much with immigration refugee rights, we do education and civic engagement, women's rights, and of course LGBTQ rights, and are best known for putting on the Aurora Pride Parade last year, the very first pride parade outside of the city of Chicago in the suburbs. They told us it couldn't be done, they told us that the suburbs weren't ready for a thing like that. I'm not one for following rules, and so we put on a parade. We had about 12,000 people show up and had an explosive display of affirmation and love in downtown Aurora. Many of those people had not been to downtown Aurora, some of them had not been to Aurora. As much fun as we had though, the parade is more than about having fun. As I shared with the Government Operations Committee last year during the permit process, it is about potentially saving lives. LGBT youth seriously contemplate suicide as about three times the rate of heterosexual youth. LGBT youth are about five times as likely to have attempted suicide as heterosexual youth. And in the national study published by the CDC, 40% of transgender adults reported having a suicide attempt, 92% of those individuals reported attempting suicide before the age of 25. These are unsettling data points. If you're curious to dig deeper, you can find more at the CDC website or at the Trevor Project. With that said, according to the letters and the comments we received from participants and supporters and members of the LGBTQ community, both during, before, and after the parade, we did, we were able to affect an awful lot of change in our community. That's why I'm here today. I'm here to officially invite each and every one of you and your families to the Aurora Pride Weekend and the parade. And my hope is that Batavia and the surrounding Fox Valley communities consider the Pride Weekend their opportunity to support the LGBTQ community. We have a weekend of diverse events planned, teens sharing their journeys via slam poetry, hip-hop, and spoken word. We have a moderated discussion on the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall Riots, which includes Representative Greg Harris, the first openly gay legislator, leader in, legislative leader in Springfield, and the award-winning storytelling group Outspoken is coming in from Chicago. It is their first time outside of Chicago. We have art shows going on, we have drag shows going on, if that's your thing, and awful lot of live music all throughout the weekend. So, we hope that you certainly come out and support the LGBTQ community, support the members of, of that community that live in Batavia, that have provided funds for us and supported us last year. And you can find more information at aurorapride.org/2019events. We continually update the list, we have been just overwhelmed by the community itself putting on a number of events that I didn't even list here all throughout the weekend. There are just dozens and dozens, and we continue to add more all of the time. So, I also have some wonderful posters because I love art. I will leave these with Dan, if you want to put them up in the, if the business of yours or the offices, please feel free, we can have more of them as well. But we do hope to see you in Aurora this weekend. And Sunday, the parade starts at 12:00 noon. Any questions?
Any questions, Alman?
Actually, I've just got one.
Yeah.
Is there anything you would do differently about, about the event, looking back on how things went last year? I, I thought, I went, I thought it was interesting, there was not as much protesting as I expected to be, and there were children and families everywhere.
We only had six protesters, we were disappointed. We expected more.
And they were in a little box. Is there, is there anything you would, you would do differently this year, anything you're doing differently because you learned something from last year?
The security protocol continues to evolve. We work very closely with the Aurora Police Department, we have a very good partnership with them. We continually assess potential threats, chatter, those kinds of things. So, that's an ongoing thing that we continue to do. I think what we're going to try to do this year is have more people on the ground in terms of plain enclosemen and police officers on bikes and things like that, just to interact with the crowd a little bit more. I think one of the things we learned is we had a lot of people who came from Missouri, who came from Iowa, who came from South Wisconsin, Southern Wisconsin, who came just for the parade. And then they said afterwards, "So, what are we doing now?" And we were like, "I don't know, we didn't plan anything." The parade was hard enough, dude. And so, this year, we have a number of after, after-parade events, including an official after-party at Two Brothers Brewery, one of our key sponsors as well. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Andy, you have anything else to say?
No, actually, it got covered, the, like you were saying, there's all these events happening this, this month. There's that event at Water Street Studios, but Holly actually already covered that.
And we will be, actually, with the Comes to Youth Outlook, a great organization, I hope you go to that event. Their executive director, Nancy Mullen, is going to be our grand marshal this year for our parade. She's also going to be part of our discussion panel on the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall uprising. And we are raising money throughout the events for three local charities that do a lot of work with the LGBTQ community and in particular, youth at risk. And Youth Outlook is one of those charities, so we hope you come out.
Your Honor, I just wanted to say, I think it's promising that for the future, that our society is becoming more inclusive and more accepting of people who maybe have, have different tastes, different lifestyles, look different, maybe behave differently, but we're being more inclusive. I just think it's promising. Thank you for your efforts.
Well, thank you, thank you. It's amazing to me that my wife and I are constantly asked, "Are you gay?" And we go, "No." Do you, "Are one of your kids gay?" Well, "No." But I think it's striking that people ask that because it's as if you can't have affection for a tribe unless you are part of that tribe. And I think that that's what we need to get over in our society.
Absolutely, thank you.
Right? Thank you, I appreciate it. I'll make sure you get these.
You had mentioned that you were the first one outside of Chicago last year.
Yes.
How many communities had it this year?
Oh, my goodness, we lit a fire.
Right.
We, Indivisible Aurora was asked to participate in the Buffalo Grove Parade just this past Sunday with Molly Penta, of course, she's the 12-year-old girl who was motivated to come out to her parents after our parade, and then they put on their, their own parade. It was an amazing event, they had five to six, 7,000 people show up, we were really proud to be part of that. There are, I believe, six to eight other communities doing something this year that didn't do it last year, and our organization is actually going to be one of the grand marshals in the Chicago Pride Parade at the end of the month as well. So, we certainly lit a fire, I'm very happy for that, and I told my team, you know, if we never run another parade, I'm pretty thrilled with our legacy.
Yeah, I would just offer up, Mayor Erwin in Aurora is a pal of mine, and he was, I think, when this idea was first proposed, he was very interested, but he didn't know what kind of response they were going to get. And the response kind of put him on a pedestal, I think. He was very pleased and proud that Aurora was able to pull that off, and this really has become kind of a, I think in his eyes, an Aurora event of some pride. So, I don't want to step too far onto it as far as taking away any of his thunder here. But he, he's, he really appreciates what's being done here, just as has already been mentioned. There's a, I think, awakening in society that this is a change of how the world acts and is and needs to be, and I think it's helping move along the movement, and hopefully, anybody from our town who would like to go to an interesting activity, this is one we would, I certainly would recommend. And I certainly wish you the very best and another great year of putting this together because you are doing something that I think, you know, makes Aurora proud and makes all of us proud that we live in an area where this can go on and be done and be held in such high esteem at such a great level of friendship and companionship and coming-togetherness. So, I appreciate it very much.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. As I tell my kids all the time, sometimes you just got to get off the couch and try to make your corner of the universe a little bit better.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I guess it's time to do some business. Item 10 is we need a motion of approval for the fireworks permit for the annual Batavia Fourth of July fireworks program as submitted by the fireworks committee. Alderman Callahan, you want to do that one?
So, move.
Second.
I have a motion by Alderman Callahan, Second of Alderman Wolf, that we approve the fireworks permit for the Batavia Fireworks Committee for the annual Fourth of July fireworks program. I would note that this year will be the 69th annual Never Miss Community Fireworks Program. And the other point of it that we like to pat ourselves on the back about is, is that in 69 years, we've never reached into the taxpayers' pockets and paid for any of the fireworks. It's all the money for all 69 years has always been donated by Batavians, Batavia Business, or visitors who came and made donations. And for many years, this was a product of community participation by the Batavia Fire Department. They started it in 1949 and moved it really forward, or 1950, I guess, because this is the 69th year. Next year will be the 70th anniversary of the fireworks program. So, we're very, very proud that we have this going, and I'm very pleased that we have it. So, Kirk, call the roll.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Seron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no-nos, and non-absent. Moving to 12, ordnance, item 12, ordinance 19-28, amending the text of the zoning code. Alderman Callahan, you have this again?
Well, this one's new. This one's actually the third time's the charm. We have been discussing the accessory structures on properties for at least three committee levels and two councils at this point, and we finally came to an agreement the other night. Scott, if you'd like to present this one.
Thank you. So, the compromise that we came up with that seemed to create the most consensus was to create a minimum building size that's allowable on every lot, and then the maximum limitation of 10%, so which whatever is, is the greater number essentially. So, essentially, would be a 600-square-foot minimum square footage that would be allowed on any lot, you know, assuming they meet setbacks and requirements for that, or 10% of the lot area as a whole. So, and everything else would be the same in regards to, you know, container storage and then the setback one-for-one standard that was incorporated there, as well as all the other text amendments which included merging the two different chapters. So, this, it's all incorporated into that. But the main issue was the, the accessory structure size that was, that was out there. So, so that's, that was the final number, that's how the after-ordinance is drafted now.
And another key piece of that is anything outside of that is available through the variance process.
Absolutely, yes, right.
You have any comments?
No, I'm not going to complain about it. No, I just want to say for anybody watching that occasionally here that it's a rubber stamp city council because we usually go through things pretty quickly, but this is a great example, and I appreciate everybody's efforts for having the conversation that we had, and going back and forth, and coming up with something that I felt is going to meet all of our needs. And so, I want everybody to hear that, that we don't just say yes all the time, and this, this took a little bit of work. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for those comments, good observation. Anybody else? Kirk, do you have a motion, second?
No.
I move, we approve ordinance 19-29, amending the text of the zoning code, city of Batavia applicant.
Second.
Move by Alderman Callahan, Second of Alderman Wolf, for the approval of ordinance 19-28, amending the text of the zoning code. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Seron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ordinance 19-28 is approved by vote of
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ordinance 19-28 is approved by a vote of 14 yes, no, no's, and absent. Okay, moving to 13, which is Resolution 19-064-R, IBEW Electrical Collective Bargaining Agreement. And Wendy, Mary, did you wanna make a comment on?
Just bring before you a three-year agreement between the IBEW Electric Division Group and the City of Batavia. Just a couple, actually, small changes to the contract you see listed that we spoke about, and I just asked for approval this evening.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of the Resolution 19-064-R, the IBEW Electric Collective Bargaining Agreement from 2019 to 2021. Any further discussion or questions? Kirk, call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ordinance 19-28 is approved by a vote of 14 yes, no, no's, and absent. Okay, moving to 13, which is Resolution 19-064-R, IBEW Electrical Collective Bargaining Agreement. And Wendy, Mary, did you wanna make a comment on?
Just bring before you a three-year agreement between the IBEW Electric Division Group and the City of Batavia. Just a couple, actually, small changes to the contract you see listed that we spoke about, and I just asked for approval this evening.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of the Resolution 19-064-R, the IBEW Electric Collective Bargaining Agreement from 2019 to 2021. Any further discussion or questions? Kirk, call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ordinance 19-28 is approved by a vote of 14 yes, no, no's, and absent. Okay, moving to 13, which is Resolution 19-064-R, IBEW Electrical Collective Bargaining Agreement. And Wendy, Mary, did you wanna make a comment on?
Just bring before you a three-year agreement between the IBEW Electric Division Group and the City of Batavia. Just a couple, actually, small changes to the contract you see listed that we spoke about, and I just asked for approval this evening.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of the Resolution 19-064-R, the IBEW Electric Collective Bargaining Agreement from 2019 to 2021. Any further discussion or questions? Kirk, call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ordinance 19-28 is approved by a vote of 14 yes, no, no's, and absent. Okay, moving to 13, which is Resolution 19-064-R, IBEW Electrical Collective Bargaining Agreement. And Wendy, Mary, did you wanna make a comment on?
Just bring before you a three-year agreement between the IBEW Electric Division Group and the City of Batavia. Just a couple, actually, small changes to the contract you see listed that we spoke about, and I just asked for approval this evening.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of the Resolution 19-064-R, the IBEW Electric Collective Bargaining Agreement from 2019 to 2021. Any further discussion or questions? Kirk, call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ordinance 19-28 is approved by a vote of 14 yes, no, no's, and absent. Okay, moving to 13, which is Resolution 19-064-R, IBEW Electrical Collective Bargaining Agreement. And Wendy, Mary, did you wanna make a comment on?
Just bring before you a three-year agreement between the IBEW Electric Division Group and the City of Batavia. Just a couple, actually, small changes to the contract you see listed that we spoke about, and I just asked for approval this evening.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of the Resolution 19-064-R, the IBEW Electric Collective Bargaining Agreement from 2019 to 2021. Any further discussion or questions? Kirk, call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ordinance 19-28 is approved by a vote of 14 yes, no, no's, and absent. Okay, moving to 13, which is Resolution 19-064-R, IBEW Electrical Collective Bargaining Agreement. And Wendy, Mary, did you wanna make a comment on?
Just bring before you a three-year agreement between the IBEW Electric Division Group and the City of Batavia. Just a couple, actually, small changes to the contract you see listed that we spoke about, and I just asked for approval this evening.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of the Resolution 19-064-R, the IBEW Electric Collective Bargaining Agreement from 2019 to 2021. Any further discussion or questions? Kirk, call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ordinance 19-28 is approved by a vote of 14 yes, no, no's, and absent. Okay, moving to 13, which is Resolution 19-064-R, IBEW Electrical Collective Bargaining Agreement. And Wendy, Mary, did you wanna make a comment on?
Just bring before you a three-year agreement between the IBEW Electric Division Group and the City of Batavia. Just a couple, actually, small changes to the contract you see listed that we spoke about, and I just asked for approval this evening.
So moved.
Second.
So, we're gonna have a discussion about staff memos. I think it was maybe, what, six, seven years ago, we made a change to how staff memos are are created. This will be an opportunity for us to discuss how staff puts memos together, and if there's any changes we want to make to to the format and whatnot. We also have a discussion regarding conflict of interest potential for employment with aldermen. And I guess I would ask, is that still something we need to discuss tomorrow? Are we, as a, as a group, making decisions on if we're seeking advice from outside the council, or is that really kind of a non-issue now?
It is non-issue in that there isn't currently any potential conflict situation. However, it was suggested, and and you can decide other, as a council, otherwise, it was thought that the city attorney could take the opportunity just to talk about that topic in general and answer any questions that individual aldermen may have with regard to the potential for employment conflicts of interest with your position as an elected official.
So, Kevin will be here tomorrow if we, if we want it. Okay. Very good. That's, that's all that I have.
City Services?
Nothing on the agenda for tomorrow night.
Public Utilities?
Nothing on the agenda.
All right. We have other business? Alderman Chanset?
Or Callahan?
Still Callahan.
That hurts.
You moved your hand.
We need to get a spotter for you, so that way we can get these right.
These two are at the same location, and they're both overly active.
Thank you, Mayor Burns.
Wow.
I have a question. I was contacted by a resident regarding beekeeping. What are our, I was looking up some of the regulations that we have in that, and she might have called.
Putting us on the spot. I would have to look into it as to the district and what it's allowed or whether it's not allowed. And I would guess that there's probably some level of restriction on it, but I would have to check into the ordinance.
Well, the reason why I was, I looked into what our regulations are, and it's kind of very vague. I found some other guidelines that are out there by the state. They regulate most of it. And then some other municipalities have specific beekeeping in the city limits in their ordinances that kind of spells it out. And I figured if there was anything that kind of also seemed, that seems like a Batavia thing, would be beekeeping, bring it up for discussion. So, if another alderman would join me, have staff look into it and bring it back.
I saw a couple of hands.
Just no roosters. Oh, wait.
Right.
Any other?
Really?
You, Ella?
Mike, I just wanted to make note that my wife is a community nurse at Mooseheart, and in April she put on, they put on a for-a-week-long health and safety function, and Police Chief Yul and Fire Chief Daiki had representation there. And the police, I think it was Detective Jason Klesny and and Jamie Goshi, they came, they're very engaging with the children, very accommodating, and I just want to say thank you for that. And I didn't get the name of the fire, who's an assistant chief, I believe.
Battalion Chief John.
John Lucas Battalion Chief, and also very engaging to the children. And the children are residents at Mooseheart, so that they live on the campus, and they come from some difficult backgrounds. The homes are somewhat difficult, and it's not just in the city of Chicago where they come from. There's some kids who come from Africa. There are kids who come from from farm towns. It's just the families are suffering and somewhat dysfunctional, some of them perhaps, and the kids have a, have a tough road ahead of them. And I, I venture to say that some of them may be being introduced to the police. So, at least here, you know, our, our police department put on a good face and and a good front to, to say, you know, we're on your side for the rest of your life, like, like we can help you. And I, I think that's important for, for young children to, to learn early on, especially some of these children who, who don't have it easy. They have it very difficult. So, I just wanted to say thank you to you both for that, and just recognize again that, that our city services, our employees at our town, the Batavia, especially our police and fire, they do engage the residents at all, all the time. And they, it's what makes our city such a wonderful place to, to live. And, and, you know, my wife and I have been here 28 years. We've raised our two children here who, who are doing well, thank God. But I, I, I just have to say thank you to the police and fire.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, going to 17, the mayor's report. First of all, I want to remind everybody that on Friday night, June 14, right out here at the Pegbon Center, the Batavia Flag Day Committee is going to have the 103rd anniversary party for the founding of American Flag Day, which, in the year that it was done, Dr. Bernard Segren, who was one of those very keenly involved in this at the national level, with then-President Woodrow Wilson for the outbreak of World War I, was very much involved in this, and he gets part of the credit for being one of the founders of American Flag Day. And so, he lived on 1184 South Batavia Avenue, and his family went to school here. We had a deep connection with him. And so, as a result of that, we've kind of adopted that, and that's where this new Flag Day monument is going to be built, based on his presence in our town and its connection to the whole event. But this coming 14th, we're gonna have a, I would guess it to be a little bit more than an hour-long program. The Batavia Community Band is going to come in and put on a concert of patriotic music. There's gonna be some food vendors, and there's gonna be some brief programs and other comments, nothing too long and laborious. But at the end of the evening, they're going to have a, a small luminary of 103 candles, and they're gonna put them around the Riverwalk. And 103 candles marked 103 years since Woodrow Wilson first proclaimed American Flag Day, thanks to Dr. Segren's efforts when he was a resident of Batavia. And so, we're gonna have that going on. So, if any of you are looking for something to do on Friday night, June 14, that is the date of, the June 14th is the date of American Flag Day. It has been every year since Woodrow Wilson proclaimed it. And so, we are gonna be having that event, and there's gonna be a couple of nice touches to it. The Flag Day Committee has gone out and purchased red, white, and blue tree candles and, and lights for the trees out here along the Pegbon Center, and with the cooperation of the Batavia Park District who has some control of the trees, and hopefully with some support from our Public Works Department, we're gonna get the lights strung here pretty quickly. And then, for the rest of the summer, during 4th of July and whatever, we're gonna have red, white, and blue lights out down here on the Riverwalk at night for people to enjoy. So, I'm, I'm very pleased by that, and we're also going to have, excuse me, some American flags put on, some of the light posts in downtown. So, you'll be picking up the patriotic theme. We've already got the flags on the building here. So, we are gonna try to stay with Batavia's longtime history of being a, a place of significance as the American flag story unfolds. So, we want to thank everybody involved in that. The other thing I want to share with you is, is that I decided this time when I wrote
when he was a resident of Batavia. And so, we're going to have that going on. So, if any of you are looking for something to do on Friday night, June fourteenth, that is the date of, June fourteenth is the date of American Flag Day. It has been every year since Woodrow Wilson proclaimed it. And so, we are going to be having that event. And there's going to be a couple of nice touches to it. The Flag Day Committee has gone out and purchased red, white, and blue tree candles and lights for the trees out here along the Pegbon Center with the cooperation of the Batavia Park District to some control of the trees. And hopefully, with some support from our Public Works Department, we're going to get the lights strung here pretty quickly. And then, for the rest of the summer during Fourth of July and whatever, we're going to have red, white, and blue lights out down here on the Riverwalk at night for people to enjoy. So, I'm very pleased by that. And we're also going to have, excuse me, some American flags put on some of the light posts in downtown. And so, you'll be picking up the patriotic theme. We've already got the flags on the building here. So, we are going to try to stay with Batavia's longtime history of being a place of significance as the American flag story unfolds. So, we want to thank everybody involved in that. The other thing I want to share with you is, is that I decided this time when I wrote my column for the Neighbors Magazine, that given all the questions and quandary and interest that it's been generating the last few weeks in Springfield as revolves around several key pieces of legislation that the government and the General Assembly, the Governor and the General Assembly are talking about, that I dedicated my column to the whole drug issue as it relates to our community. And I will tell you that I find it very troubling, the amount of activity that I see the Batavia Police Department being called upon to deal with in the drug arena. And it doesn't seem to be getting any less despite their heroic efforts to try to fight it. It just keeps rolling in. And of course, now the sixty-four dollar question around town is, you know, we have passed now recreational marijuana in Illinois and what's going to be our reaction and whatever. So, I don't know if anybody has, I certainly don't have a negative reaction to it, but I will tell you that the last couple of weeks as this thing has been running through the legislature, and every day it seemed to take on a different twist or idea or amendments are added or removed or whatever. Chief Yule has been very directly involved in his role with, as Police Chief and as a member of the Illinois Chiefs. And myself, as my role in Chicago with the Chicago Metro Power Nation for Planning and as a board member on the Metro Mayor's Caucus Board of Directors, I've been in several meetings recently where all this keeps getting hammered around, and we've had to make some decisions about what we liked and didn't like. And the one thing that there seemed to be a commonality, the police certainly had a problem with it, and I certainly did too, there's some provisions in the bill originally that were going to allow people to start growing marijuana in their backyards. And you're going to be able to do three plants or five plants or whatever it is. Well, you went in and had the bigger meeting. You find out from the police that they're very concerned about this because, number one, you plant these plants in somebody's yard or wherever they're going to be, and if there's five, supposedly allowed, that could turn in easily into fifty-five. And then, you could easily have a lot of them taken out of the yard in the middle of the night by people who thought, well, I'd like to have some marijuana myself, and I don't want to pay for it, so I'll just go across the street and steal it from my neighbor. So, I think, Dan, we got that pretty well controlled, don't we, in the latest rendition of the bill? But I keep having a lot of people in town asking me, you know, what's the city's position on all this? I don't know if we have a position as much, as I certainly have some concerns about a couple of things. So, last Thursday, I got on the phone and called Attorney Drundle, and I've asked him to prepare a memo outlining the final bill. Now, we had to wait till this weekend was over before Drundle and Chanses could get their hands on a final version, so he can tell us what's in there and what isn't in there, because there may be a few things in there that we don't realize are in there. But then, I'm going to, Laura and I had talked, and I think we're going to invite those guys, once they get this memo down, to come to a committee meeting sometime in the very near future, in which they're going to outline for you what we think we can and cannot do, or things we don't want to do, or things we are opposed to. And certainly, I definitely want to have the Police Administration, Chief Yule and his folks here with us to have that discussion, so that we're all on the same page and everybody knows what's going on and where it's going and what's happening. So, I just want to let you know the topic is out there. It's going to be in Neighbors Magazine this coming issue, and there's going to be quite a bit of, I'm sure, community conversation about it. And you, Alderman, you'll probably hear about it, but I'm not said, and I don't think, I certainly can't speak for the council, that we are taking a position for it or against it as much as we want to make sure that whatever they're putting on the street, as I am concerned that we got some control over it and we have an understanding of what people can and cannot do. I was on a call this morning with some of my fellow mayors as we continue to talk about some of this stuff, and it was interesting to hear some of them suggest that on Friday night, when this thing supposedly got approved by the Illinois General Assembly, immediately, there was a lot of people that said, well, I can bring it out of my pocket and smoke it publicly now. And there was a whole bunch of folks running around the region smoking marijuana in front of everybody. And they said, well, you know, it's been legalized, so maybe it isn't legal to, is it the first of the year is when this goes into effect? Well, they aren't going to arrest me if I'm doing it already because it'll get thrown out or whatever their rationales may be. One of the things that I think I also heard on the call today is, there's already been some suggestions that if you are a heavy drinker of alcohol and you consume a lot of alcohol, and then, at some point during the night when you're drinking the alcohol, you make a switch to marijuana, that there's apparently already been a couple of incidents in the area where the liquor and the alcohol and the marijuana don't see eye to eye. And they have, people have various physical reactions to it, some of which is you just pass out. And so, I heard this morning on my calls with the mayors, a couple of police chiefs were already quite concerned about people doing just that, drinking and then smoking, and then getting in the car and trying to drive. And, you know, they're driving down the road and they pass out, and where does that car go then? You know, that's something to consider. So, those are all the questions I'm hearing out there. This certainly is a lively topic of conversation and one that a lot of people have an opinion about. And obviously, I don't want to leave you guys out of the discussion in this. It's your calls to make, but I don't know if you're going to want to make any changes to our local ordinances as it applies or not. And I think they do provide us with some zoning abilities. If we don't want to have a dispensary in town, we may be able to prohibit it, or we can, whatever we want to do. As you may remember, when we did the medical marijuana, we changed our ordinance to allow for medical marijuana to be grown or sold in Batavia. And at the end of the day, as near as I can tell, that ended up being a big political thing. And there was only so many dispensaries and growing spots arrived in Illinois. And from everything I could tell, there was some politics behind who got the dispensaries and the growing stations and whatever. So, I'm not sure where this one's at. I haven't got the political read on it totally. But it's out there on the street and it's coming our way as it is every other town in the state of Illinois. So, I just think we should be up on it and have our act together as to how we want to respond to it. And do we want to do any further controls, or we just want to let it roll with the punches? And as I told you at the committee meeting, not to move to just another subject real quickly, last week, we've got, I've got at least three different folks on my doorstep now wanting to add video poker to either downtown Batavia storefronts or out on Randall Road. I've got, both locations have been earmarked for people that want to come in. And as you may remember, at the encouragement of Scott Buneen as our Community Development Director, he got us to adopt and amend our ordinance to allow it to be a conditional use. So, anybody that wants to open up one of those is going to have to come in and go through the process. So, just be prepared to have that conversation.
As part of the weekend money grab down in Springfield, also, sports betting was on the docket. And so, I'm curious to know what implications that has within, you know, within our community. Yeah, because I'd be, I'm curious to know.
Well, I think we should, I'll ask, I'll go in tomorrow and ask him. You know, I've been part of some conversations about that in Chicago, and there was a lot of conversation about the Major League Baseball and the professional football wanted to be part of the receivers with some of the revenue on this thing. I don't know where that's ending up, but they were all wanting to get their hands in the game here on that one. So, Alderman-Chansett?
Two things, I guess. If Kevin's putting together a memo, I would be curious about some detail on our downtown business district, because I think we've made some distinctions on the types of businesses that could locate downtown, whether or not a dispensary would be appropriate. And then, two, probably as a larger policy discussion, I understand that we have an electric utility and power to sell and redundant power, so perhaps there's an opportunity to encourage high electric use grow facilities to locate in our community. Perhaps that's a policy decision that we could discuss.
Do crow lights take a lot of energy?
I understand that...
Yes, they do.
They use a lot of power. So, it could, it could actually be something.
And I think we've already discussed that when we amended the ordinance to allow us to have a growing during, you know, we had a company that had, signed a lease out there, and then, when the politics of the day arrived on the scene, I was told, well, we want to give this to another town because of somebody's political connection or whatever have you. And so, our chance to get that, and that was the exact reason why, we were going to be able to sell a lot of electricity. So, I don't know if we got any more growing stations or not under this new deal. We'll see. But the city attorney is going to put together a document for us to respond to and read and react and make some decisions accordingly. But it may be, you got to give them a few days to get that together. The bill, I think it's five hundred pages.
Oh, for sure.
It's like reading a novel.
It will be an interesting discussion. I'll say this much, I have friends that live in Colorado who describe there were more dispensaries than there were Starbucks, and the market ultimately sourced this out. You can't have nineteen dispensaries on one block. The best one is going to be the only one that stays open. So, I don't anticipate Wilson Street being one big row of dispensaries.
Yep. And I'm sure there would, if, you know, if that were to occur, there'd be some people in town that would want to come down here and address us on their opinions about that. So, that's not an easy one to just lay on the table and say, here it is, I can relieve it. There'd be, there'll be some strong conversation if that were the way to go. I'm led to believe that this is going to be a pretty tightly-run business as far as how many dispensaries and how many growing spots. And, you know, that was the one criticism about, nobody seemed to have an answer that I ever heard about allowing people to grow it in their backyard or in their house or wherever they're doing it. Because once you did that, you know, we were touting, as you may remember in the state administration, how this was going to be a big tax thing. We were going to get all this tax money from selling all this marijuana. Or if they're growing it in the backyard, guess what? There's no tax going in place. So, we'll see where that will answer.
Hate to make this analogy, but I think the tomatoes at the grocery store taste better than the ones I grow at home, so...
Okay. I'll leave that. We have a final word. Alderman Wolf, I entertain a motion?
I move that we return. Second.
Motion and second, or take a voice vote?
All in favor?
Aye.